Alright, E D A meeting. June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. We'll call for attendance, please.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams? Mr. Rhodes?
Present.
Mr. Hardwick?
Here.
Mr. Robinson? Mr. Pierce stuff?
Here.
Mr. Holderide?
President?
Chairman Brown.
Thank you. Do we having electronic participation?
No.
Tonight, no? Okay, thank you. Can we get a review and adoption of the meeting agenda minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve it. The jet.
Thank you, do you have a second? Awesome, thank you. Approval for the minutes for the March eighth? We do those as two separate?
You don't have to, but you do need to take a vote on the meeting agenda.
Okay.
You can do the all in favor if you want to.
Okay, all in favor of the meeting agenda set as it is for tonight? Any opposed? Alright, thank you. So approval of minutes for March eighth, twenty twenty-three work session. I believe that we had an update to that.
What was updated? I missed that part. I reviewed them.
I think it was for.
This section right here with that.
Alright, so we have first and second, do we take a roll call on that?
You can be the one.
Alright, all in favor of approval of the March eighth meetings?
Uh, done.
Name, state, where, okay, no, alright. And then for May tenth, twenty twenty-three, draft work session minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Do you have a second? Awesome, thank you. Alright, moving on, thank you for bearing with them, still learning the vote. Oh, need a vote to for approval of?
Second.
I thought we got that.
You definitely, you got the first. Vote to the second, you need to vote.
Oh.
Just all in favor.
Yeah, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Alright, moving on, we have our presentation for tonight, Commerce Park update. We have Mr. David Martin here. Pleasure, thank you for coming to this evening. Would you like to? I'm going to stand, thank you.
Now, I don't know what kind of presentation you're anticipating. Percy told me that y'all wanted to invite me to come down here, so I don't know what is on y'all's agenda. But, long story short, we're planning on developing, attempting to develop in the Commerce Park. There's thirteen lots, total twenty-six acres that we have back in the back part of the park. Currently, right now, I have three different tenants who want designed built space and are ready to sign a contract to move in, but we can't do that yet. Everything is tied up with the county right now because primarily the entrance, the road coming in. And the county's known about this. I bought my original lot back in two thousand and six, so I've been involved in the park for a long, long time. Back in two thousand and eleven, I had set of plans drawn up, was gonna submit them to the county, and the county wouldn't accept them because the stormwater system, the roads haven't been completed, and the road in the front wasn't compliant as in two thousand and eleven. The road, nothing's been done to improve it. Even when the county had the resources available to it with the bond that they were holding, nothing was done to make any improvements. So, everybody here in this room knows that the Commerce Park has been floundering for years and years and years, and nothing's been done to develop it. The road coming in, in two thousand and eighteen, the county paid to have a study done to see what it would take to, what improvements it would take to bring the road into compliance. Nothing's been done about that. You know, and going through all the lots that we have, it's really kind of ironic when you start sitting down and looking at the values that the county has assessed to these lots. It varies from twenty thousand an acre based upon the tax rates to over a hundred thousand dollars an acre for a joint and lot. There's just no method to the madness of the what's been assessed, which I know that's not for this meeting, it's something I need to get with Percy about and go over. But, but when you have one lot that's twenty, assessed at twenty thousand dollars an acre, and a joint and lots is assessed at a hundred and eight thousand dollars an acre, all of these are lots that we just recently purchased, not the lot that already had. Lot that already has assessed at forty thousand an acre, the adjoining lot next to it is assessed at twenty thousand an acre. So, that's for a different discussion. But, we've got to come to resolution about that because certainly don't intend on paying taxes on that kind of a variance. In, in, you know, in the meantime, I'm not even quite sure why we're paying taxes down there because for years and years and years, the property can't be developed. And because of the roads and because of the, prior to this transaction, me buying these lots, the county wouldn't enforce the bond which mandated that the stormwater system and the roads be put in. For years and years and years, we fought to try to get it done. The county attorney, Mr. Stuck, was representing the developer on the county's nickel instead of representing the county and used the excuse of the period of validity that the state extended and is why that the county couldn't enforce it. And it just floundered for years and years and years. So, Shane didn't want to develop it, Shane's not a developer, not a builder, and decided he just wanted to bail out. And myself owning a lot there since two thousand and six, for the price that the property was available for, been foolish not to buy it because it's surrounded all my property. But we're still at the point where until the infrastructure is put in, nothing can be done about it. So there's been conversation for years about water coming in there. And there's been conversation for the past nine months that I know of that we're putting it out for bid, we're putting it out for bid. And I think maybe as recent as a week or two ago, we got put out for bid. So the whole process here in the county is like herding turtles. Go back to prior to buying this, the cars, it took ten years to get something done, to get the cars, there were two hundred and fifty cars, I guess, stored on vacant lots down there. Literally took ten years, it took coming here, meeting, 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 and bringing pictures, showing all these vehicles, the county wouldn't do anything to enforce it. So I guess my main concern here is we're prepared to, to, to develop these lots and put buildings on and bring revenue into the county. But my concern is what's the county prepared to do? Because they haven't done anything that they were supposed to do or said they were gonna do since two thousand and six when I originally bought that lot. And I know the county has been plagued with manpower problems, turnover, so many different administrators, so many different planning directors. But before I'm ready to make a commitment to develop these lots, the county's gotta make a commitment to live up to its end of the bargain. So, with the water coming in, you know, they anticipated the water was gonna be out for bid, and then nine months later, finally gets put out for bid. Quite honestly, I'm not so sure of the benefit of the water coming up into the park. Because without sewage, the water is kind of meaningless. The existing buildings that are in the park, everybody's got a well. There's, I added them up earlier, twenty-five or twenty-two vacant lots combined with the six in the front, excuse me, and the balance in the rear. The revenue doesn't exist to support the construction of putting water and running it all the way into the back of the park. Now, the subject of sewage come up. Well, I know that the county is hoping it's gonna get a grant to help offset the cost of running sewage, but that's a five-year project. So the water that was gonna be in place within the next year or two has floundered, and God knows when that'll be ready. And the sewage, if in fact it ever gets put in, so when you've got this property and you've got these drain field lots set aside, it, it allows thirty-five percent more property to be used for revenue generating space versus drain fields with water and sewage. You know, without sewage, there's no point running water up in there, cheaper people put wells in. And then it's also said that it's mandated in the original proffers that anybody there would have to tie into the public utilities if they were ever run. Well, the county's gonna have a hard time fifteen, twenty years later enforcing that. And people, that's, you just, you know, it's a battle that your county's not gonna win. You can't have somebody in, in your development for twenty years and then put sewage in and then tell them they've got to abandon their well and septic and tie into the county sewage. That, you know, whether it's legal or not, whether it's ethical or not, would really be the question. So, we've got the subject of the water coming in, we got the subject of the septic coming in, the sewage coming in. So where does that leave us as far as developing the property? Thirty-five percent more property is available for revenue generating space. I mean, the county right now brings in somewhere around ninety-two thousand dollars worth of revenue between personal property, real estate, B pole, food and beverage taxes. And that's not an accurate figure. I mean, because it, it's stated in the report that we're still discussing with the commissioner of revenue, the full identification of B pole and the real possibility that exists that some businesses within Commerce Park are not paying B pole or have a business license. Well, that's a real simple problem to fix. But then it carries on. It's also confirmed that this is also a possibility throughout the rest of the county because there is no current follow-up method to check for non-paying businesses. So, from the county's standpoint, to all localities want to increase their revenue, when the county doesn't have the wherewithal to check that the businesses operating within the county have a business license or are paying taxes, that's a bad problem. You know, a seventy-five thousand dollar a year person could generate millions of dollars a year worth of revenue by just ensuring that the businesses are paying taxes. Just something for the county to think about. It's, it's just absurd that there's no means and methods of making sure that the businesses operating within the county are paying their taxes or, or are licensed. It just, it makes no sense. I've got developments up in Hanover County and, and multi-tenant warehouses up there, and I, yearly, I have to furnish a list to the county of the tenants so that the county can make sure that they are collecting their revenue. And for King William not to do that, it, it's just absurd. I mean, I, I don't know whether y'all are aware of that fact or not, but, I mean, if the economic development is trying to bring revenue into the county, before they focus on that, they ought to focus on the revenue that they're missing out, that's already operating within the county. So, that, that's just one point. So my questions are, what is the county intending to do in as far as the, the water in the sewage? It's in the comprehensive plan talking about a public-private joint venture referring specifically to the Commerce Park. Now, the whole comprehensive plan references the three sixty corridor, the central garage as being, area as being the focus of commercial development within the county, being the main focus. You know, if we, if we talk about the, and in the content, comprehensive plan, it specifically says, King William Commerce Park has potential for redevelopment improvement through a public-private partnership effort. So my question would be, what's the county's intention as far as a, a partnership effort there? Yeah, if you go back to the plan, it says, unfortunately, the park has had financial and infrastructure challenges over the years. Parcels are available for development, however, there are design challenges with the remaining parcels because of infrastructure deficiencies, well and septic systems and roads. I mean, the truth of the matter is, the road systems that were put in up the front don't meet standards and never should have been approved. But, we are where we are. So if the county's aware of these problems, when the county had the ability through a bond that was being held to make the improvements or forced that they were being to improve, make the prove, forced to, to bring the improvements into compliance, county had no interest in doing that. But like I said, the county attorney was more concerned about the developer than he was the county. Puts us back to where we are. I'm more concerned about the county's commitment than I am what we're able to do as far as bringing tenants and bringing revenue into the county. I've got a development that I'm finishing up in Hanover right now. It's got sixty-five individual warehouses on it, completing the fourth and fifth buildings right now. And, and I determined that once this property became available, this was gonna be the next focus of development. Then you mix the water into it, and you mix the sewage into it. If the sewage, if, if, if we can recognize thirty-five percent more value in the property by having sewage, it makes no sense to develop it now. Like I said, the water, the only advantage, you gotta have water so you can have, and this might be the angle that the county is after, I'm not sure, you just gotta have a water meter so that you can charge somebody for sewage. Because your sewage is based upon your water consumption. I, I'm not sure what the angle is. But wells are cheaper than what it's gonna cost the county. County never in this world will generate enough revenue from the water to pay for putting it down and running it into the back of the park. Yeah, and talking with Percy about the sewage, and there was, and I think Steve gave to me, there's a a layout that's been made that shows the sewage coming up through the park, coming out the back, onto Newcastle Road, then turning and coming down and coming across Clement Field to the Hampton Roads pump station. There is easement already in place for that. I, I told Percy and Steve that we would gladly donate the property for the pump station because the logical place ward is in the back of the park. But here again, this is still in the beginning of discussion stages, and it would be five years before that ever came to completion. So where does that leave us as far as developing the park? You know, I look at the taxes that we're paying. And, you know, when, for the, all these years that I've been paying taxes on the lot down there, and knowing that the county won't even accept plans, it wouldn't accept a, a, a plan of development for the lot because the infrastructure hadn't been put in, i.e. the roads and the stormwater. But yet the county is the one who wouldn't pursue getting that done. So, so now we have lots, more lots to pay taxes on. The, the tax structure is just, it's so varied as far as the value of the different lots that we do need to have a discussion about that because it makes no sense whatsoever for one lot to be worth twenty thousand an acre, and then the adjoining lot to be worth a hundred thousand an acre. How that ever was structured, I, I don't have any idea, but we'll, we'll get to the bottom of that at a different date. But it doesn't make any sense from a development standpoint to be paying taxes on all these lots that you can't build on. So, there's a lot of things up for discussion. How the county, you know, it, it's obviously in the comprehensive plan that the county thinks that a public-private partnership is a way to develop a park. What's the county's intentions? What are their ideas as far as a, a partnership to do it? You know, the corridor between Richmond and Tappahannock back in two thousand and five, six, seven was very, very strong. The bottom fell out two thousand and eight, and, and the park just never has come back. It was plagued and plagued with different ownerships and financial problems. But truthfully, the businesses that are in the park now should never even have been granted certificate of occupancy because the roads and the, and the stormwater system hadn't been put in place. But they were. So, you know, it leaves things up in the air, how quickly do we move forward? What do we do with the property in the meantime? We've cleaned the place up. I was very, very persistent with the county as far as getting those cars out of there. It was, I mean, it, it's been a, you know, it was just a, a black eye on the county. Nobody in this world would ever want to move their business up in there when you see two hundred and fifty junk cars sitting there. And it took, the county threatened the, actually the new owner with legal action in order to force having those cars moved. Yet, for all of those years, it was against the zoning requirements and the proffers as far as storage of vehicles. And the county wouldn't do anything about it. So I'm not coming in here as somebody who hasn't been aware of what's gone on for so many years. The park has been floundering. The planning department, the administrators, have been so many changes. You know, back in two thousand and eighteen, when they had the study done on the roads, and that just documents that county's known since two thousand and eighteen that something's gotta be done on those roads. Nothing's been done. And it's all well and good to put in your comprehensive plan that how much of improvement and, and how beneficial Commerce Park would be. But if it's just words on, back, I think it was a two thousand and seven comprehensive plan that I remember that referenced and actually had pictures in it of the Commerce Park. Didn't make any difference then. So, my concern is, is it gonna make any difference now? I know there's different people in place. But before, I'm willing to make the financial commitment to go ahead and start developing, there's gotta be a commitment from the county or, or, or evidence of a commitment from the county to do so. I, I, in future discussions, I want to find out what the county's idea of, of the public-private partnership would be. Like I said, there's tenants waiting right now, I actually saw him this evening before I came down here, wanting to know when we could start building this building. And, and I, I haven't told him that, I'm not sure why, I've been, I don't want to lose him as a potential tenant. He's actually a tenant of mine now in Hanover, but he wants to move down here because he lives in the county. He wants to move his business down here to the county. You know, and you, and you look where the county's currently generating with what they know exists, ninety-two thousand, ninety-three thousand dollars a year, an investment by the county into the roads and the stormwater system, in, in a matter of five, six years, you start getting a return on your money. And it's very few things that you can invest into that substantial amount of money, then in that short a period of time, you're gonna start seeing a return on. I hear about the excess funds that the county has, or has had over the years. And, you know, in years past, how those funds were gonna be diverted to the Commerce Park, that's never happened. So, like I said, I'm not concerned what I could do as far as putting buildings up, the tenants in the park. I'm more concerned about the county and what their intentions are. So, that's where we stand.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, for coming in and, and showing your interest in King William County for bringing business and also being a landowner there. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Martin? I know we, we probably do. So everyone will take their turn.
Did you buy the rest of the lots there?
Yes. I bought all the lots that are, all the lots in section two. Which is twelve lots and only already owned ones, there's thirteen lots altogether. There's, in the front, in the front, there's a couple lots for sale. As far as vacant lots, there's six vacant lots in, in section one in the front. And then.
You don't own?
No, that I do not own, no. I own from, if you're familiar with the park, you come in where Andy's Automotive, just before you get to Andy's Automotive is where the line was from section one and section two, own everything behind that except for the daycare and for Andy's Automotive. So.
I understand the county had their hands tied for a while, five years ago.
County's had their hands tied because the, the attorney, Mr. Stuck, was using the excuse of the period of validity, which the state extended to the period of validity on plans that had been back when, in the bottom fell out in two thousand and eight, developers had already, had already spent the money with architects and, and doing, in site development to where they have a, they make spend twenty thousand dollars on a set of plans. Well, then the bottom fell out, and, and nobody anticipated the impact. But, the plans in your, your permit applications are only good for a certain period of time. By extending the period of validity, it meant, and they kept renewing it for three-year periods, I believe, yeah, three-year periods, meant that those plans were still good, and those permits that they've been issued were still good. All the approvals were, were, were still be good, you didn't have to go back and resubmit. So, that didn't pertain to projects that were already under construction, which King William Commerce Park was very much so under construction. It didn't mean that projects that were under construction didn't have to be completed and didn't have to complete it to meet the county codes, state codes, and the proffers in terms and conditions of the plan of development. But every, every time we came down here, Mr. Stuck was sitting right over there and smirking grin. I firmly believe, well, we don't need to go into that. So the county was, was relying upon Mr. Stuck's recommendation that he couldn't enforce the bond. There was a bond in place specifically for this reason. If the developer did not fulfill the obligations of putting in the infrastructure of the park, it was a bond in place that the county could pull the bond and force the developer to do that. But when the excuse was used that they can't pull the bond because of the extension of period of validity, the county would not do it. And, and relied upon his recommendation that we can't pull the bond. So, here again, if you sit down and read the, the period of validity extension, it specifically references new construction. It doesn't reference construction already in progress. And that's the whole reason the hands were tied. It common sense tells you, it doesn't reference work already in progress. But that was the reason that, as you say, the county's hands were tied for so many years. In, in the property, the park changed hands between Mr. Polig and Sonny Haynes and Roger Kistner and then his son Shane. If, if Roger Kistner hadn't become the owner and passed away, we wouldn't have be having this conversation right now, because Roger Kistner would have made sure that the park was developed to the way that it was supposed to have been done. That's just the way, kind of person Roger Kistner looks. Shane's not a developer, he didn't want anything. Shane's not a developer. He didn't want anything to do with it. He inherited the problem. So. And then after, I mean, I know Shane. After years of battling, and I'm coming down here battling to get the roads and stormwater put in, which I know directly is gonna impact Shane, but. Now, the county wouldn't accept plans in a permit application. Because the site work in the in the in the uh, the roads and stormwater hadn't been put in yet. The stormwater pipe comes coming from the low side. Comes directly across my property to a stormwater basin. That's gotta be put in place before I could build. And the kids, all that's gotta be done before we'll accept your application. So so that only thing it does is just let me sit there and pay taxes for years. So, like I said, when Shane wanted to get out. It made sense for me to buy it because all the lots surround the one that I've got. Whether we develop it, start development in the next six months, the next year, or the next five years. Is a question. I mean, and now is a, I mean, economically now is a very, very good time with all the development going on at Central Garage. Those businesses are gonna are gonna need support businesses located to to facilitate all that. Uh, it's a good location. But, you know, we, like I said, doing away with the drain fields increases the. Usage thirty-five percent of the property. So what do you do? Do you wait five years for anticipating that the sewage is coming in? Do you wait a year, two years anticipating the water's gonna come in? Like I said, I personally. The county cannot generate enough revenue through the water to pay what it's gonna cost to run the water back there.
So what what happened to the VDOT lines, right? The roads that were coming into the park, they were they were supposed to be a VDOT.
They were originally put in supposed to meet VDOT specs. Because the whole intent was it, once the park was built out, the county would take over the road system. Originally, the main road coming in went all the way out the back to Newcastle Road. There was a conversation years and years ago about. One of the pieces of property being a potential for a fire station and the county wanted access out the back to Newcastle Road. That was long abandoned and then I I was reading through paperwork I have back in. Two thousand eight, two thousand nine, one of the amendments uh, said that the county did not want. The road to go out to Newcastle.
So so what happened to the bond, right? I know getting off of VDOT bond is, it's not fun.
It was determined that after so many years that. At this point in time, with the changes with the changes in hands that have taken place. I mean, as recently as probably a year ago, that at this point in time, the bond wasn't enforceable. That was prior to to. The purchase of all the lots. I mean, I was still pushing to get the bond enforced. I mean, the the amount of the bond now is is not enough money to. To pay for the completion of the roads and the stormwater system. But it was certainly a good ways to get started at it.
So the bond, the bond that was reinforced against the.
Developer.
The the original developer?
Yes, and but it traveled along as it changed hands. So the latest developer who was Shane had a bond to for the completion of the. Development. And it was just never enforced. The county wouldn't enforce it.
So you don't have a bond?
No.
So it it would go back to Shane if 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 it were enforced?
Well, I think one of the questions is right now. In in my purchase from Shane, I purchased section two. The available, the remaining lots in section two and the roads in section two. Actually, who owns the roads in section one is up for discussion. Percy has asked me, do I own those roads? I said, no, most certainly I do not. I bought from Shane in our contract, the roads in the back part. Shane wants nothing to do with the roads, nothing to do with the park. He's 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 glad he's out of it. In in my opinion, the only thing that can happen is the county condemn the roads. And take the ownership of the road. Because there is nobody else to do it and the county is the only person who can condemn it and do that. Then the improvements have got to be made and this has been known. For years and years and years. I mean, like I said, in two thousand eighteen, the county paid to have a study done. It to inspect the pipes and see what was wrong with the piping that was put in. I haven't seen the results of that. I'd like to know. But. It's it's not a new problem. So in the plan of development, all of the roads have got to be put into VDOT specs. Right now, the road in the front does not meet VDOT specs. If the roads that we put in, it can't be mandated that it. Meets VDOT specs because a VDOT road can't tie into a private road and then turn back into a.
Can you can you get VDOT to release their their the the roads and and and?
Well, VDOT has no claim on the road now. Because the road is private. I mean, it's not, it's not a.
They had a bond, right? So.
Well, the bond was a development bond. It wasn't with VDOT. It was a development bond on the whole development.
Oh, I didn't, that's a nuance that I I thought we were talking about a VDOT bond.
No, uh-uh. This is a development bond that was on the on the whole project when it was developed. The county mandated, you know, upon acceptance that the bond be put in place specifically for completion. I- in if if the developer.
I got it. It's a nuance that I wasn't.
Right.
Yeah.
So that and it 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 was just never enforced. I mean, it 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 uh, and it could have been enforced. I mean, that's kind of where we are.
So, yeah, we're we're grateful that you're 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 taking this thing on and. You sound like you got 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 the right appetite and approach and patience. We appreciate your, we appreciate your.
Now is a good time, especially with the other work going on here in the county. It's a great time to be. Putting up buildings and and either selling or leasing them out. Build a suit or even if it's just multi-tenant. Office warehouse. These up in Hanover, I mean, I've got two buildings that I'm finishing right now, which would be a total of sixty-five units. Each unit. Is eighteen hundred square foot each. The last two buildings, uh, buildings four and five, there's a total of fifteen units in there. Thirteen of the fifteen units were rented before I broke ground on on construction. I- it's a hungry market right now. And it's a good location.
Mr. Hartwick, did you have?
I can, the question, you may have answered that. As far as number one, is that road interest? When is that staying? That, you all know, or what's being done about it? Does the county own?
County does not own it.
Who owns it?
That's the question.
Company that's you funk right now, that it, right?
There are some original agreements, I think, that said the, as soon as that park babies had tenants. Businesses then then they would be a. A group and the roads would be theirs, but like you said, none of this has been enforced in the past. Currently, even as we look into our. Design, the water pipe getting easements, it has to be cleared up for us. Exactly. To get that and we are researching that right now.
No answers on that? As far as that road?
And who owns it? No, not yet.
Is someone working on it legally?
Yes.
For they down?
Yeah. Our legal team is not looking at it. It's that we have paid Bowman and it's part of their job in there, their legal team to be. The consultant, yeah, but part of, I mean, they've got a division for attain obtaining these that's.
So when did that start, that process?
A couple of weeks, few weeks ago.
Okay, so something new and and we're staying on top of it, right?
Yeah.
Because they ready to rock and roll.
Mr. Ashcraft, is this something like this? Is that, is this where like a consultant group would? Give us a number for build out from start to finish or is there specialty consultants that for the stormwater and? Going about, isn't, I've been on the EDA now for four years and this park's been brought up multiple times. We've had offers to buy that land. It's just that these various things that came with it, um, you were the first one to come along and look like jump on it and have a vision, which is awesome.
Or either the one foolish on the.
It's land.
You can sit there, I mean, for that matter, we could put a fence around and put cows out there, you know, i- it's it. But but that's something that's ironic. In no other county has property values gone down to the extent. That the property in in the Commerce Park has. I I was looking back at the tax bills. So right now, well, in two thousand and eleven. Lot thirty, which the lot that I own. Was assessed at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. This year. So it went from two thousand seven at a hundred and twenty, two thousand eight to a hundred and sixty-one five, two thousand nine, a hundred and sixty-one five. Two thousand ten, a hundred and sixty-eight. Right now, it's assessed at a hundred and thirteen. You know, we all like to think the property goes up in value. So and it it it's the same with every other lot in there. And it really makes me wonder where the values for the assessments, how where the assessments have come from. I mean, if you just look at the list of the six lots in the front of the park that are that are vacant lots right now. If you take the value divided by the acres, you've got one lot at fifty-nine thousand, five hundred, one lot at sixty, one lot at fifty, one lot at sixty, one lot at seventy. Well, that's all within a period of close range. Then you go to the back of the park. Lot twenty-six, which is the lot directly adjacent to Andy's Automotive. Twenty thousand an acre. The lot just passed that twenty thousand an acre. The lot directly across the street on the right-hand side from Andy's is twenty thousand an acre. The lot adjacent to it, twenty thousand an acre. My lot. Right next to it, forty thousand an acre. Lot next to it, forty thousand an acre. And and it's not taking into consideration what portion of the lot is buildable because two of the lots have creek and wetlands coming through them. But nevertheless, forty thousand an acre. Then we jump up to seventy thousand an acre for one acre lot.
Mr., I'm sorry, sir, from a business opportunity, because that's why we're here, you know, with EDA, the taxing is one thing. These units that you're proposing with these tenants, and we don't need to know names. How many units do you believe in your vision fully built out?
Well, that's that's something else that's interesting because if you look in the comprehensive plan. And the layout it showed in the comprehensive plan. And the twenty-six acres. A property that's back there. Comprehensive plan shows three buildings. There's a total of thirteen lots. And the schematic and the information in the comprehensive plan shows a total of three. It's a pretty picture, which financially viable to do the development if you only go put three buildings back there. I I I plan on doing some lot line adjustments and combining some of the lots. But there needs to be at least eight to ten buildings back there and and there's space work. There's twenty-six acres of property. I was kind of surprised when I was reading through the comprehensive plan and saw that. They only show three buildings.
How many units per building? I I guess they'd be different sized suites.
Well, it just depends, depends on your tenant. I mean, the the person, the the tenant that's pushing right now wants a sixty thousand square foot building. Right there on the corner across from Andy's Automotive. Ironically, those two lots are assessed at a hundred thousand dollars an acre. But that's that tax assessment's a different situation, but it just goes to show there's no method to the madness. Um, but he wants a sixty thousand square foot building. The the another potential tenant. The one on the corner wants to buy the property. The next person down, he wants sixty-five to seventy thousand square foot. He does distribution. He just wants to use it for staging the top. So it it all depends on. Once you get one one building started. It opens the door for other people's interest. People come into park all the time wanting to either buy a lot. Or uh, have a a building location there. But most everybody around here knows that the park has been clundering for so so many years. But soon as you start one positive thing, break the ground and start one building. It opens the doors. And it it, you know, it's no different than these warehouses up in Hunter's Ridge that I started putting up. Uh, there's a total of sixty-five of them. Um, the first two buildings, there were nineteen. And they were all rented within. Two months of completion. Uh, the second building had twenty-six units in it. And I waited two years in between there because that's when COVID hit, prices skyrocketed. But all twenty-six of those units were rented within a month. And they're all three-year leases on the building. These aren't this many warehouses. These are businesses that operate out of. Three-year to five-year leases. The last two buildings, thirteen of the fifteen were rented leased deposits. Before we ever broke ground. So and and it's a great location up there in Hanover. It's right off of Lewis Town Road, proximity to Route one and ninety-five. But but it's no different than down here. The corridor, all the development that's getting ready to happen down at Central Garage. The Commerce Park is in a great location. But until the first positive thing starts happening, all the naysayers are gonna say, no, we don't want to be down there. So it it it's gonna take something positive to happen and to 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 open the door to other people coming in. But we got to figure out what can we do combined as a public private venture to make that happen.
You're saying when all this is cleared up, the people waiting to come in, do it, get it, get everything straight like it ought to be.
There's there's one fellow right now that rents three warehouses from helping Hanover. He lives down here on Manquinn, on, was it Manquinn Road? Winchurch, Quitton Church. He lives on Quitton Church Road. Operates a business. He lives in operates a business and it's based out of of Hanover. He would much rather it be right down here. I I saw him at five-thirty when I was leaving the office. Well, yeah, the the possibility is there. But like I said, it's gonna take breaking ground and somebody seeing some positive movement. For anybody to have any confidence to move in and do that. So we got to figure out how do we get to that point. And we're not gonna figure that out tonight, but we got to get the seed planted that we're we're gonna move in that direction. Or or we're not. I mean, we'd all like to think property goes up in value. The Commerce Park hasn't. I paid a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that lot that I bought back in two thousand and six. At one point in time, the assessment was down to seventy-eight thousand dollars. And believe me, my wife was not too happy about that. But long story short, it's come back up to where now it's assessed at, I don't know, what I said it was, a hundred and twenty-three or something like that.
Do you have interest in developing any other pieces or you have your first preference or sole purpose is this is the Commerce Park?
Well, you can't take over so much at a time. Now, I mean, once I get done with the Commerce Park, my intention is. I've got a steel fabrication business and a transportation business up in in Hanover. I've got. Two sons that. Are will be taking that over. And I enjoyed the development. But it's gotta be, it's gotta have potential. I mean, I I wouldn't, once the, you know, building the park out is not gonna happen overnight. But I I have no objections to. But I I have no objections to, you know, another piece of property and and development, and if there's potential there. I'm not doing this just because I, I mean, when I found out what I could buy, would would Shane offer me the property for, it was, it was, no question whether to buy it or not. Do I want to just let it sit down there for for fifteen, twenty years and let my kids worry about it? No, I wouldn't do that to them. Um, but something needs to be done with it, and now's the time, economically, now's the time to do it. Chris has had a building in the back of the park for thirteen years. His is one of the buildings that never should have been approved, because there's no road going to it, no stormwater system put in. County never should have approved, given him a final and given him a certificate of occupancy, but they had luckily, thank God. Um, but over the thirteen years, i- it's just like the piece of property that I had, I I tried selling it, you know, once the bottom fell out. At one point in time, I would have sold it for fifty thousand dollars. But no bank would lend anybody any money on my lot, any other lot in there, Chris's lot with his buildings on it. Because there's no access, I mean, without the roads being put in, banks don't lend money. So, I mean, but for thirteen years he's been back there and he's had multiple offers, people wanted to buy his building, but you can't sell it, because there's a bank won't finance it for anybody.
Mr. Administrator, do you have any comments or anything to add?
Gentlemen, ladies, I I I think you recall, it's been a year ago. Now, staff has tried to push this to the forefront, and first of all, I want to thank Mr. Martin, because. This is probably a candid of a presentation that I've heard about the park. Uh, not blaming the past, but saying the past is what got to here, now how we want, how we want to move forward. I believe there's been uh several determinations of what it's going to cost to bring all those things up the grade. The most recent one, I believe, was done in this this past September. And a copy of that was sent to then the chairman of the E D A, to me, uh, one point four million dollars. Is that right? One point three, one point three million dollars, and that does not include the, the sewer, am I correct on that?
Correct.
That's just, that was just road?
Um, one point four is just, one point three, I'm sorry, what's just, what, the stormwater and uh and road, fine roads, okay.
Now you say roads?
Yeah.
All roads.
And that's a study we probably need to give to all E D A members.
So does that include the improvements on the main road coming in?
That was nothing about the.
That was just the rear.
But, no, no, it's the road coming in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
For that, all the way to the back.
And we're. So the county is generating ninety-two thousand dollars a year on what they know exists down there. With a little legwork, they're gonna find more money that's currently being uh revenue, it's currently available. You know, that could easily double.
Yes. You're talking in there about two hundred thousand dollars a year, so one point three million dollars, that's that's not a bad.
And after, after five years, you got a return on your money.
No worry if you ask me.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to think that these warehouses are gonna have that kind of return after five years. Um, uh, but long story short, with the, you know, if the county wants to participate, the county benefits immensely.
Very true. But we all know with the kickback, I mean, the biggest holdup is gonna be is H R S D, right? Whether they stay in, but any of that.
Well, yes, that would be an issue since it's not in the current service area. I would say it's easier to get this through since typically sewer for commercial industrial and gonna be nearly as much as something. Houses, um, but H R S D and the one that's gonna be putting in the infrastructure to get there.
Right.
And that's, it's, that there'd have to be a pump station and another, another, a number of other. Improvements there just for sewer, just to get it to H R S D.
But it's the best time to do it, if you got to do all the road construction.
And it was, I think about four.
It seemed like.
Million dollars that we applied for, for that.
Six maybe?
Four point six.
Now we cover it a hundred percent?
The H R C requires.
Oh, but would that cut, what was the sewer quote?
That was four point six million dollars was. Yeah. That wasn't in the weeds. Price, well, I mean, it was, it was a, it near report.
So that's just for the Commerce Park, or were you gonna extend it away?
That was, that was just for the Commerce Park, that was a. And 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 something easy to say, project, put it together, apply our grants, see what we can get.
Running that sewage uh enables other.
Right.
Uh, usages in the area from other people to tie into that sewage system. But it it makes no sense to put in water. And then turn around and go back and put in sewer, make, you know, economically, it's more feasible to do both at the same time.
What's the, what was the water quote?
Water?
Looping it through?
I mean, it's out, the bids, the pipe, it's already, it's already come back, it's been awarded, um. Waterline bid has not uh been awarded yet, it's not come back, that just went out, or it's going to go out uh July tenth. Um, we don't have the exact price, because, yeah, the estimate was, but it was for. The project as a whole, they have to just pull up the numbers to find out what Commerce Park section was for.
So none of the water is going out for bid yet?
Water, as a project, construction has not, we, the county actually separated the pipe. That we can purchase that separately.
So you could purchase some materials for it?
We can purchase that material, get it going on the lead time line.
So, eh, that kind of puts us back into the herd and turtles process, you know, we've been doing this for years. Um. Thirty-five percent more property available with water and sewage. Uh, which is more revenue for the county. So, eh, you know, all of this tends me to believe that it's better for the development to wait. Uh, until water and sewage is put in. Eh, because just from the usage of the property and the expense of putting in wells, putting in drain fields. And then abandoning them, and then you you've already built. Um, but then do you miss the, do you miss the, you know, you miss the opportunity where the economy is right and and people want buildings? Um, what's going on in Central Garage is gonna, is is gonna develop more potential as it gets started.
Question, and um, thank you so much for the time you're spending with us, when you do these large, just from a developmental standpoint, these larger facilities, can they run on a mass drain field?
Well, part of that would do, would depend on the contour of the property, uh, you'd have to put individual pumps in in order to pump to a uh massive drain field. Um, whether that's practical or not, I don't know, I can't answer that question. Uh, right now, the drain field lots, or some of the lots, the way that's originally laid out. You've got to cross the road and cross the property across the street to get to where your drain field lot is. Um, which makes no sense, because you can't build on that lot. You you'd have to go ahead and run the pipe for the, for the lot across the street, um, when you built on. The lot that the drain field attached to, I mean, the the drain fields aren't attached to the lots that they are for, that makes no sense.
Understood, and I know a mass drain field wouldn't work in that application in the Commerce Park, I was just worrying if there was another parcel somewhere.
Uh, don't know, can you answer that question?
Thank you. Does the board have any other questions for Mr. Martin?
Would all of these tied at once, would be the best, road, sewer, and the park all at the same time, or can we do roads first, then one step to the next step?
Well, you don't want to build a road and then tear it up by putting in water and sewage, you don't want to put water in and come back, tear the road up, put sewage in.
I didn't know if your plans were to run it on the side in the middle of the road, or how would?
I I have no plans right now at this point in time, as far as. I I've heard that we don't know who owns the road, so we're gonna try to get easements on adjoining property to run the water and sewer. Um, I. Personally, I think condemning the road and the county taking ownership of the work, the road enables, it solves the easement problem. Um, and just, I don't know, you, I don't, I don't anticipate that you go find that you go get any participation out of Shane on the road. Um, so the county's the only person who can condemn the road and take ownership of the road, and you run your water and your sewer. Down the side of it, and if you anticipate it doing that, even if you didn't tie it in yet, when you run your piping, you go ahead and run it. So that you're not going back and digging your road up two, three times.
But if you, if you end up in a situation where the shortest distance between here and there is, is um drain fields. Is 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 that viable, or is it just?
Oh, it is, I mean, it is, it lowers the use, you know, the the return on, it would lower our return on investment, because here again, thirty-five percent of the property is set up in drain field.
I'm just asking whether that's something.
Oh, I mean, well, you got buildings in there now that are operating, that that are operating all off of drain fields. And and wells and, you know, all private wells and drain fields. Uh, but it does limit the usage of the, of the acreage.
Right, well, thank you so much, Mr. Martin, for coming in this evening and speaking.
Certainly welcome, like I said, I I I know that there's, there's, there's people who want businesses in the Commerce Park. Um, the building of the buildings is the easy part. So, but there needs to be a commitment from the county in order to allow that to take place. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you, uh, next we have the, uh, have a good evening, thank you so much, uh, treasurer's report?
Thank you, gentlemen, uh, there's no change since last month, there have been no expenses.
Only question I have is, we, I know we sent two invoices to the county for the farmer's market, I just want to make sure if you haven't gotten those, that I get that to you before the end of the month.
Um, were they sent to county finance?
I hope so.
I mean, did, did it come in to Chris or?
Okay, one was for the signs and the other was for the septic, so I'll, neither of those was my assignment.
Okay, I haven't seen them, but I might, probably wasn't the person that they would have gone to, but.
I'll follow up with them.
Okay.
All right, uh, conclude the questions for treasurer's report. Um, we need a motion to approve treasurer's report.
You should do that.
Yeah.
You should do that, Mark.
To approve the treasurer's report. In all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, approved, thank you, uh, chairperson's report? Believe we do not have one for this evening. Okay, um, moving on unfinished business, uh, start with a farmer's market update from Mrs. Williams.
So I missed the first market, but I hear it was very well attended and the vendors were very happy, um, any attended, I don't, I wasn't here, so I don't know if the rest of you did or not, but um, I heard that it went very well.
Yeah, I I know that, I I, it it was, went well, I would like to see uh the more people out here. I thought it was a little less than the last one we had last year.
Less vendors or less people?
And vendors?
It was about maybe four vendors that didn't show up, there was empty spots on the back row.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, didn't seem to be as many vendors, am I right on that?
Not eh eh.
The last one last year was a very large turnout.
That was a very big one, and and the the one that we have coming up this Friday has about seven more vendors, so we're full.
But that was, make, we're approaching forty, no, thirty-nine?
We're at thirty-two, and for the space that we have without adding another row, I would say we're full.
Okay, okay. Hopefully find that regain speed, that's possible, that as these things curve without addition.
Right, yeah. Um, and Ashley, who was in charge of the last one, is really good with the social media, and she's been pushing it really hard. Um, and we had an article that came out in the Thai Water Review.
Yeah.
And I saw that just the other day, um. So I think there's been good press, everybody seemed happy, um.
Yeah. Momentum is everything, I think continuing to keep the vendors, this is the last thing we want for them, is to start to drop out and not see the value, so. Um, any suggestions that we as a board can give to businesses that do attend, I know we talked about having R D C electric co-op. Do some community, maybe the us as the county have a table. We got two tractor dealers, hardware store, stuff like that, um, can you give us an outline? It it has to, if you're gonna sell it at the market, it has to be made.
Yeah, you have to be producing it in some, so either you're sourcing raw materials and you're like baking.
Yeah.
Or you're growing it yourself. Um, or if it's like crafts, then you're purchasing again the raw materials and you're making it yourself, so reselling is not permitted.
But as far as like a tractor or some sort of farm-related vendor?
I mean, I don't think we'd have a problem with it, the only thing we need to do is kind of keep a balance of like informational type of booths versus like actual physical products. And so we're kind of hitting that point where we've got like a couple of consultants, and we've got like a couple of different, um. Like community booths, which, you know, we're totally fine with several of them, but we don't want it to just be a, like an information fair, you know what I mean? So kind of balancing that has not yet been a problem, but we're keeping an eye on it.
Contact, I mean, I can get in touch with you, I know they've come down.
Yeah, I have not, it was just an idea from the last event.
Yeah.
That that's that informational fair bucket, it kind of.
Yeah, and anybody that wants to apply, I mean, whether, regardless of what they do, they're welcome to apply through that link that I sent you before. Um, and then we'll review it and decide if it's right or not, well, we haven't said no to anybody yet.
Yeah.
So.
So do you want, you want, they can.
I mean, if they want, right, they can apply, yeah.
They they traditionally, I've seen them at fairs and different events, they've got good community outreach.
Front Harris, they always come to night out, up there, where's it, I can't even follow them, night out? Yeah, yeah, they come to that.
They're, they'll be there.
Yeah, I can get, I'll get, I'll get them, I can get them, yeah, I just, uh, and it'll be just an informational, you know, for the kids.
Seven.
Yeah, so, show of hands, who will be participating or coming this Friday, do we have any, we have one? Oh, excellent, um, did we want to have a table set up on behalf of the E D A or county? I I can't, I don't think I can attend this Friday, but tent and table?
We probably can't put that together that quickly, from a county perspective.
All right.
We can, uh, maybe find a table if the E D A members want to do it.
I'll I'll be there, but I'm, I'm. I'll, I'll be there, but I'm, I'm. So we'll skip on the, the booth for this, this Friday. We'll look at that, maybe a future.
Yeah, I mean, I can always put flyers on my table. Um. I don't know if that's really appropriate, but. I'm happy to do that. Um, so.
Any other a- asks? I know we talked about tables.
We had talked about tables. And the only other thing. That I was gonna kind of bring up in new business, I was gonna ask two things, and one of them was like with the unspent funds from our budget, is there something we want to think about? The tables or something else, because the fiscal year ends June thirtieth, right?
Closing of the books comes a little bit after that, so there's, we try to. We try to get all invoices in as much as due thirtieth as we possibly can.
So do we, did we get the payment tables squared away or something?
Well. I think as I suggested, uh, through email, we've built some here recently for the historical society and we can put that. Uh, try to put that through, uh, our maintenance department. I don't know how, we obviously won't have them done by Friday.
No.
Um, if you wanted them more quickly, it would probably be easier for you to go back. Um, but my question is. Where do we leave them? In between markets. Which I think would probably take school permission.
Right. That was my question too.
And, and then obviously, uh. If they're your property. You might find some places to warm after that, and we can try to work with you to try to find. That, because most of the picnic tables that we, that we operate are. They're out somewhere, they're either at the rec park or at the historic park, you know, some, somewhere like that.
I did price out tables, I called, uh, both our hardware. And miscellaneous stores in the county and no one currently sells them. Uh, so loads of mechanics, well, it's about a hundred and fifty per table. Uh, a treated yellow pine, we might want to stain them, maybe we can even get some community service into, to stain them. So, and they have those in stock. That we can get them, don't hold me to the one fifty, I think that's what it was online. So by this Friday, we could probably get our hands on them. Maybe, might not be stained, but we can have them set up in the food court, and then also as it gets hotter for places for patrons to sit down.
But I think Mercy was, his comments were helpful, right, so I think before we go. Hold a trigger on that, we need to be about what we're doing with them, we need to get some permission. So I think, yeah, we, we're, we don't want to.
Can we borrow any from anybody for this particular Friday?
This time of year is probably not good, because the rec park is still operating with their youth sports. And the historical society, the ones that we just recently built are supporting their archaeological day that they're doing almost every. Every week. We do have one out here on the other side that's not being utilized, it could certainly be, uh. Be taken over there, it's not. I would say to accept.
Well, we can rent tables.
Fold up tables and chairs, it'd be easier to store and that's what we use to form here. Is tables, a chair. And because you can put them in a smaller area and it's plain pine. Pick the table, it's not gonna last.
Too much maintenance.
Just too heavy.
That's why I looked at the metal on U line, but those are.
I'm gonna ask a question, I've seen it, like that hibachi truck, when he sits there at three sixty, but he got his own table jacked. Sitting at that with it.
He does, you're up.
Yeah. And, uh, I've seen turbos had picnic tables up there, painted his colors, the green. Has it been on? So maybe I'll ask him if, if they would mind bringing a couple tables and chairs, but I think. That's just my thing. I know they have, because I've seen them.
I don't think the hibachi is coming. I don't have them signed up at all. We can ask turbos and big mics if they have. Tables that they want to bring for their.
Imagine big mics.
Oh, yeah, when he sets up that day like, when I call her, you know, he got some tables, especially lunchtime, you have tables.
Well, it's been on the list for the next market, but the folding chairs and tables, I know, I even talked to Ashley about maybe. Once the market stands alone, getting an enclosed trailer or shed. That a lot of these assets.
Everything comes out, go back in, I ain't got carried by one.
Yeah, that's maybe all we can work towards.
Signs and the cones and everything.
And, and would that have to become a nonprofit at that point?
Yeah, so that's the goal, oh, when this market is done, as long as it's successful. That, um, it'll be turned into a non, a nonprofit, we're gonna apply for a matching grant. And a trailer and more equipment will be included in the grant.
Awesome, spectacular. Anything else before moving on? Thank you so much for everything you've done to get this off the ground, and I know I surely enjoyed it, the last one, looking forward to many more. Alright, next item is, uh, local business roundtable discussion. I'll go up from the last EDA meeting. Mr. Rhodes, it kind of had presented this and we as a group are gonna come together and come up with a, a, a plan and a roadmap for this. Mr. Rhodes, do you want to start?
Just trying to think about the, the, the most, the most expeditious way to. Put this together, is this something that, like, maybe a couple of us could have a discussion and bring something back to the group? As a, it, it, and, um. Absolutely, and that might be more efficient than just a.
Yeah, I know our paid EDA person, um, when we find that right individual. This was a mission that they were gonna spearhead and also assist us. I guess maybe I would ask two things, but I know we're running behind on time. For Mr. Ashcraft, you've done these before, and maybe to share just a couple minutes on the successes you've seen. And then us as a group come up with the industries. And then maybe associated business, we'll just talk about industries that we would like to have represented. But Mr. Ashcraft, how have you seen these work successful in the past?
I've been fortunate, I've, I've created business roundtables in both. In the previous two localities that I worked in. Um, one. The board supervisors wanted staff to, uh, identify a group of businesses. Uh, and send letters to, and then follow up on. To see if they rent this, didn't serve. We decided to just have these just, these men and women of the businesses serve this one year. Our meetings were every other month. So you had a total of six meetings. Beginning in, uh. I think it was, uh, June, or, and maybe it was about the February I think it started. That was one method in which was very successful. The other. Was to give the board supervisors and the members of the, uh, was I D A then, uh, in a previous county. Ask them to bring forth the business first, I mean. Which is probably a more easy, uh, more quicker way to get. Get started. Then those folks would be a member, and then we also did the same thing. They met six times a year. Uh, usually a. A meal meeting, whether it be lunch or dinner. And you bring in speakers. But at some point in the agenda, you always had time. For what we refer as a business roundtable. It would give everyone there an opportunity to share current experiences that they're having. Concerns that they're having. You know, uh, any, any suggestions that strengthen our business community. And obviously it's up to staff and the, uh, and the governing bodies that are represented to run with those ideas and try to, try to implement. And at the end of the year, you got a little thank you ceremony, and you, you got a whole nother set of, uh, of people. And it was generally, um. Fifteen was a good number. We had it as low as twelve, I think, in any given year. Um, and we, we tried to make the businesses, uh, small and large. Uh, that way you have a balance in every, in every this group discussion that you're doing. And, uh, it was, it was very successful. I think it created goodwill, uh, contacts. Employment opportunity, uh. It's just. Really the discussion is limited, is limitless as to what you can talk about, and normally it was about two hours. You know, if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna eat, you probably need to allow, you can eat over your discussions, and that's rarely in the beginning. I would, uh, as county administrator, I would give a staff update. And we could talk about things that are going on in the business community, and then after that. Uh, that's when you can get into your agenda, whether you have another guest speaker, or whether you just want to open it up as your, as your roundtable.
So, so, so I've got a suggestion that I just thought to the group, and that is that we as, uh, Mercy. To, to reflect on the best practices, like the, 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 what worked really well, right, and, and. At, and. We talk about it next, next time?
I think, uh, just to be thinking about this, I think the question is, would he, do you want to? Why handpick a business person? Uh, that way, or would you rather us?
I, I turn the question around and say, from a best practices standpoint, what did you find worked?
They both were equal.
Right.
It's just the quicker way to get your member.
Yeah.
Is to go ahead and have one of you to each have a member that you want to serve on that particular year.
And have you seen these, call it like a business ambassador? Were these people kind of listed to where other businesses could reach out to them and that they could be their voice, or it's more of just.
Quite frankly. But over my time. It, it was, I think I started in year two in Caroline, in year one in French Door. And we had them ten, eleven years in each one. It was consecutive, and, and when you got down to the point where you think, think you were kind of running out of interested people. You bring somebody back.
Yeah.
From a previous time, because there's been enough time for them to have a, a renewed perspective.
Yeah.
So keep it as simple as possible. But I think you'll find just the fact that you're getting together and you're discussing matters of interest. Uh, it can only be a positive.
So what industries would be select, like, um. Construction maybe being one of them.
That'd be hard in Kingman County, because it's so small, I mean, it's limited.
Well, we have multiple, it could be marine, farming, agriculture.
We have to have.
What I would have is. The mill and, and Parina you may want to have in several years. You might not want to bring them both in and. But if you wanted to do, if you wanted, you think they both need to be represented at the first time, then we could go that direction.
I mean, there are only two of twelve.
Right, that's true, that's true.
You read, does commission review know how many industries for? Business we have in the county.
We could get you a business list.
Because, I mean, that way you start looking at a variety of different ones, because. I know there's a lot of industry, but I don't know what they did.
Yeah, we could, uh, we can try to get you a business list.
I mean, I prefer that we not like bias our choices by, you know, people we know and businesses that, you know.
Well, I think that would be ideal, because like, I agree with you, you don't want both big industries we have at the same time, I think it's better to talk to one. When that one flows down, bring in the next one.
Yeah. So.
So what did you, what did you all think about having this, having, having Percy, um, bring back his best practices? Based on his thirty years of experience. We, 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 we can adopt it, or we can revise it, or, you know, we could. Does that work? I mean. Is there a better idea?
I mean, consider. I guess I would say that. It's not a lot of action on our part in this meeting, but considering that we're sort of waiting on the EDA hire. Maybe it's appropriate.
And what do you want to get out of it? What I was found was more valuable was just the exchange of information. Uh, the call moderator. And I, and from a government standpoint, it brought us closer to the business community. Uh, whatever roadblocks, there were none, I mean, they, they put staff, uh. To the test, uh, to follow up on things, and, and we certainly got, got ideas from, from everyone that was in the room. And. It doesn't, didn't cost anything for them, it, you know, all they needed was a little time. And sometimes, uh, depending on the business, you might have, um, multiple people attend over the course of the year. You know, maybe the, maybe the owner comes the first couple of times and sends the, the, you know, the, the first line supervisor. Uh, it's just, it's good, I mean, uh, I. I think this is one of the first things that I talked about to you. Only because I just know that communication can never fail. In, in doing that, we can. And, uh, and if we have. If we have any cloud of confusion and involves people. In the business community and their involvement of getting information, well, that's the. That's the place to clear it up right there. Unfortunately, you can't get two or three hundred businesses at one, in one year. You're gonna have to do it over a period of years, but I think that's a good thing as well. Because no matter who's in these positions, that can continue to be a very successful, uh, venture. And it's low cost and it's low maintenance.
Absolutely. Could we maybe have a, a goal that by the next EDA meeting, we come with. Industries and we can try to iron out an, an invite list?
Or can we get a list of the businesses?
Yeah, I'll see, uh, what, I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be quite a number, I mean, I. I think we have, and, and of course, you know, you have a large number of, uh.
I have a presentation on that, actually.
Okay, um. Home occupations, you may want to have one of them. Just because that is a pretty large sector of the community now. Uh, and so.
Yeah, so Sarah and Charlie's, um, recommendation about having a list. Will help, I, I mean, because we'll all default to the people we know, right, and, and that doesn't necessarily get us the best information or the best people at the table.
Sure, well, we'll try to, we'll, we'll check with the commissioner tomorrow, see how that's broken down for some kind of a spreadsheet or something, because. And, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll get that out to everybody.
Excellent, uh, thank you. Any, any more comment on the roundtable? Hopefully maybe by the meeting of next month, we can have this ironed out and. Maybe by August or September, we can have a goal to start, have our first roundtable discussion. Excellent. Alright.
Can I ask more unfinished business?
Yes, well, yeah.
So I'm coming back to this budget because we have fourteen days left, sixteen days to spend money. Is there anything we want to spend money on, or are we gonna give it back to the county? It does? Okay, never mind then. So that was one thing. What?
You're thinking like an academic.
We have a fiscal year that is hard.
Did you have an asset in mind that?
I did not.
Well, Steve advised me that I'm half right. That you can, that you can recommend that your money will load. And the board could reappropriate it back. It's not.
When does that need to be done by?
Well, five June months ago, yeah.
Will the farm, in the farmer's market, you.
I'm pretty conservative on us spending money on the farmer's market beyond the twenty-five hundred that was already allocated, so. Um, we're definitely gonna get those invoices submitted, but we won't use the full twenty-five hundred, and then I think there was still a chunk of money. So I think we do need to. Move and approve the request that the board of supervisors will over our funds. So I'll move that, if I can do that.
Yes, so can you restate the mo- in the motion, Mr. Ashcraft?
The role of them. Ask them for the role of them. Yeah, ob- obviously, if you want to do that, so. At this meeting, or it can be done.
Do we need a motion?
Because you, you, do you plan, I guess, do you plan on making any, uh, purchases before you now do, Barry?
Not beyond the two invoices. Not beyond the two invoices that I'm aware of.
Well, then I, I'd say it's okay then, um, to do it now. Because if you, if, but if you were gonna make some, you wouldn't do it until you're done making those purchase. But now you can go ahead and do it now, make the reply.
All right, so the, please restate the.
Do we need to move and approve?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's the, uh, operating, the operating budget, right? That's not the, the economic development.
Right.
Larger sum of money that the board had, that the board had, um, put in your lap to make recommendations to, uh, to the. In which the, uh, I think the position of the director accompanied expenses was coming out of that. We're not talking about that, that part.
Right.
We're talking about the operating, where it is, right? Yeah.
Right now, everything, everything.
What's in your present, what's left?
Yeah. Yeah, because nothing ever got moved into this account until somebody was actually hired for all the personnel stuff.
So do we need a motion?
So I moved, uh, the remaining funds in the operating budget after the two invoices for the farmer's market that we request that the board of supervisors roll it over into our next operating budget.
Very well said.
Yeah. First and second? All right. Thank you.
So we need to.
Do we take a roll, vote on that?
Yeah, you probably should.
All right.
Mr. Pierce though? Mr. Holder, aye?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hardly?
And it'll be on the future board agenda probably, probably after, until after.
I have two more unfinished business questions. Um, do we have an update on the hire?
So we, the last we had, we had a callback interview, uh, the panel. And it was to determine that we were gonna wait at that time.
This one.
Um, so we're back to accepting applications and to post it. But we don't have, uh, the group just did not wanna advance ahead and go with a candidate if we didn't think that they were the best fit. Sorry for not giving that update about fifty, fifty, fifty.
And then the last thing I was gonna ask, and I may be totally wrong by throwing all these things in without mending our agenda, is, um, do we wanna add the commerce part to our next agenda to strategize a little bit? Like, I feel bad that he came and spoke to us for an hour and, and.
We closed the meeting. We closed session.
Okay.
This evening.
You do.
To discuss that or something?
Discuss in general.
Okay. All right, that's all I have then.
All right. Moving on to new business, uh, I have a presentation, uh, discussion to share on local, uh, small business data.
Obviously, I'll, I'll. You wanna ask, uh, one, somebody else, the chair, while you're out here again?
Uh, yeah.
In case there's questions that come to you, somebody would facilitate the meeting. That's up to you, whoever, just point somebody.
Yeah.
Or I'll, you chair me.
All right. Did you? Your live on?
I did not get it. Yeah, I can't access my email.
After some lockdown. Um, so what I did was, you know, in the thought process of having the paid EDA hire, you know, we talked a lot about, um, our existing businesses and kinda plan of attack this individual. We talked about business roundtables. But when we look at our existing businesses, um, you know, how many does this person go see? How many do we have to see? So I was able to get some data from the commissioner revenue. And I just wanted to share just a quick little PowerPoint slide, just to give us some ideas and some feedback on the businesses and how many to see. It's in this data, it was very interesting.
Did you want the data up or the?
We're, we're gonna toggle back and forth, but on the data please, in the opening session, uh, just, uh, on the business name, just cover them up.
I ca, I can't do that.
Oh, in a reader, we, uh, okay. So maybe we'll, we'll omit that one. We'll just do this, this year.
Okay.
All right. All right, so the commissioner assured that in twenty-twenty-one, we had seven hundred and forty business licenses. Twenty-twenty-two, seven hundred and forty-eight. Uh, so far in twenty-twenty-three, it breaks down that we've got three hundred and sixty-two that are less than the fifty thousand dollars. So the way, when a business goes into the commissioner's office right now, this is the bottom of the chart where they fill out basically the, the beep hole and stuff like that. So we have a significant amount of businesses in the county, uh, that are saying that they're below fifty thousand. And that, and that's fine. They may be a little boutique business, a home-based business. And then basically the other is greater than. Um, I, I don't know who the, who our top ten is. I'd be very curious to know that. Cause I think that that could be helpful for our hire to know our top fifty, top one hundred. I just do know that some of that information is quite sensitive. So I, I know I don't have it. Um, and we probably wouldn't know necessarily their top dollar of what they revenue, but the taxes that they paid. So the math can get done backwards. But it's just interesting to know that almost fifty percent of the businesses are let, are less than that. So we've got the ones that are over it. But where it gets really interesting is that, but go to the next slide. Where's the origin of these businesses? So just in King William alone, Alit leads the charge with a hundred and sixty-seven. Uh, King William eighty-eight, Manquent forty-six and West Point forty. So that's a very small portion of the big number. So what's really interesting and actually quite encouraging is that we have businesses from Texas all over the U.S. that their headquarters are there, but their satellite offices or some sort of association with King William County. And, you know, when you look outside of us and you look at, uh, your Hanovers, your Mechanicsols, your Henrico's, if, I, I do have the list and, and if I can share it here, it has business names on it. That's a lot of contractors, which I think in a way is great. Um, because they're, if they're doing work in our county, they have a business license, so we're getting taxes from it. But I also see that as an opportunity, because if we could find out, let's just take an electrician. I'm just picking something, for example, out of Hanover. If they're doing an abundance of money in King William County, well, maybe we can court them to come here and have an office. You know, there again, this is for this, our EDA position to go after. Um, but it was just really surprising to see where, throughout the whole U.S., people doing business in King William are next. So, uh, this is just a su- suggestion when we have our paid EDA person that, you know, we have three hundred and eighty-six businesses that are over fifty thousand sales that this person, you know, as we sat through the interview, we talked about, uh, ninety days, hundred and eighty day plans that, you know, the hundred and fifty in the, that are in the county, we make a personal call or visit, this person does. And then as far as outside the county, we take that top one hundred. And then we can see these as an opportunity to bring these businesses to have a physical presence in the county. Uh, we can go to the, uh, PowerPoint, pardon, sorry, the Excel file. Like, like, you know, if you do, our county is a territory, a business plan. We always gotta know the numbers. It always helps and that, so we can create a strategy and a roadmap. At least I have no dollars associated with it. Th- this is just addresses and names. But if we were to go like, for instance, I think it's the Canonsville or Henrico, um, there's a lot of household names. You know, names that we see on the TV advertising home services and different contracting. So if we go through, we probably recognize, uh, some of these names, not even the name. I just thought it was, it was good and encouraging, but also I see it as a lot of opportunity, opportunity for us to bring more businesses from outside the county. Uh, some of these already do a business with a business license, have them be established. But there's a lot of home-based businesses that you start Googling these addresses. So what, what is this list that we're looking at? So this is all of the business licenses that we have so far for this year. Sorry about that. These are people that have come in, uh, you know, planning and zoning has approved their location. If, if it's based in the county, um, they're on file with Commissioner Revenue. It, it's just, it was mind-blowing to me. I, I really thought that out of seven hundred, over fifty percent would have been county-based. And don't get me wrong, if, if someone has a Texas address, they do have something here, but the, the origin is in Texas. So. Big blast fireworks, let's see that one there. Fireworks, man. Any questions about any?
So all those Mechanicsville businesses down a finger here in King Williams, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, like R C I builders.
Huh?
Yep.
Is that what you're saying?
So to the way, it doesn't have to be a physical location, but say they were a contractor. Um, they would have a business, say they, they did work on our building here. They would have a business license.
Okay, all right.
So it could have been a one and done job.
Yeah.
Or they could be reading, they could work.
But not on my face.
Uh, no, some, some undo of offices here. But there again, that, that would be, um, one of us physically making an outreach to them and mark off, hey, do they have a physical, do they have a physical presence here or do they not? But I, I see this all as great opportunity. This is our customer base. Uh, Mr. Martin, who was here earlier, you know, he alluded to the, the revenue of having these businesses here. So thi- this is, this is our customer base. This is our future, current and future business tax dollars. Both peep, beep hole, machinery and tool.
So this, this was new business, right?
Correct.
Uh, wha- what are we doing, like at the county to collect taxes, to enforce taxes? And to, to get taxes that people are supposed to be paying that they're not?
I mean, that's, that's a, that's a question, uh, road for, uh, on the collection end, it's certainly the treasurer's responsibility. The data, in order to make that collection, would come from the commissioner of revenue. And I think it's been discussed here at some point that maybe you might wanna invite either or both of them at a future meeting and let them discuss the processes in which, in which that takes place. I know, uh, since I generated that report about commerce par, that the commissioner did go back in and, and verify the business licenses. And actually, there was only, there were only five, I believe, that had not had their business license. That, uh, when I did that report, and that has sent them in the office. But as far as countywide, I think she'll tell you that there's no strategy at this point. Personnel being probably a, a, a big handicap to her. But also just other priorities that are taking place, that's reassessment of property. Uh.
So, so isn't there disconnect, so like we've got an elected official who's responsible for collecting taxes? Right? And, but yet she's dependent, or he's dependent upon being elected, right? So there's kind of like a, like, you know, like, you, you're gonna go after the people that are putting you in office, right? And, and, and so aren't there others, other, other municipalities deal with this differently, don't they? Uh, uh, isn't there another model?
Well, the, the administration of government can have.
Enforcement.
Well, can't have enforcement.
No.
Only, only the treasurer can enforce uh, or collect the linked one tax. That's really what we're looking at. Is somebody doesn't pay on time, the link. Whether there's deadlines in which, uh, uh, you're allowed to carry it, then the treasurer. And matter of fact, we just had a tax sale here not too long ago. Uh, but as far as collecting the business licenses every, every year, that is a function of the commissioner of revenue. Your, your county administration does not have that. Now, obviously, that's a model that most counties have. Now, it'd be up to the board of supervisors if they wanted to change some of the priority and move it.
And this, this, the same, the same system exists in Alexandria and Fairfax and.
To my knowledge, it existed in, in the other, again, the two previous localities that I've worked for in Virginia, that's how they do it.
So the, there is, there is a different field to it in some of the, in, in Alexandria, for instance. You don't feel like you're talking to treasurer, right? You're talking to, I mean, it's like staff and it's their job to get the money. And, uh, I mean, is that something that would be helpful here?
Well, you know, there's constitutional questions about what those, uh, offices have done for years.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I, I think without hearing from the, both the commissioner and the treasurer, I, you know, I don't know that they would wanna relinquish those responsibilities. I, I probably. But.
I just, I'm just focused on the.
Especially if they come to you and say man, with more manpower, they could do more.
Yep.
Uh, but I think the delinquents, the, the collection of linked taxes is going very well right now. I think the identification of non-paying business licenses and ultimately them, them, uh, paying, that is something that is almost a brand new program that's gonna have to launch. Uh, we're, we're dependent on people to do it on their own and there's not much coming behind it.
Is that something that's in your, I mean, you focused on that?
No, it's the commissioner of revenue.
It is, okay.
It is.
She's in charge of, in, in, in collecting those taxes. If I'm paid, she needs, she needs and her staff needs to go after.
She's in charge of identifying who owns.
Right.
If that person chooses not to pay, then after three, well, after a certain period of time, the treasurer can can, uh, can collect it.
But the commissioner, but the commissioner of revenue has to provide the information to the treasurer. So there's like all these disconnects, you know?
That's where it starts.
Yeah. Business license.
Same thing.
Same thing. So the treasurer goes after the people, not, the commissioner gives the information to the treasurer and the treasurer goes after.
That's correct.
And if they don't, and they get penalized if they don't pay, they're penalized. It builds, it builds.
Absolutely.
What happens if you don't get the money after two or three years?
Well, you have a, you have, you always have a circuit court as your, uh, as your final, uh.
Yeah, well, you got to sell a property, but how about the business license?
Well, they're also, they're also committing a violation within the state as well as local. Because if they're not paying local taxes, they're probably not paying.
Right.
State taxes as well.
So how do you go, how do you go after? You just send them a bill, they don't pay? Send them a bill, they don't pay? I mean, it comes a point. Something's gotta happen.
That's right. She, she has.
She does that?
She, she has a method to do that. I don't know that she's doing it, but there is a path for her to collect.
Okay.
But in her defense, there's a lot on the plate of both of those constitutional offices. And I think it's going to take, make it that a, a further priority. And she'll probably tell, they'll probably tell you more people would need to be assigned to do that in a way that they would like for it to get that. But I would encourage you at some point, if you wanna know more about the process, invite both of them in and let them share, let them share.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, if any other questions exist, thank you for looking at some of these datas and ideas. But I, we're assuming that we'd all agree that, you know, at some point, maybe touching all these businesses. would assume that we'd all agree that, you know, at some point, maybe touching all these businesses, but at least knowing our top fifty, top one hundred. That's something that we have a paid E D A representative, they can keep those businesses very happy, continue to grow them, and then also try and bring up the other businesses. Any question?
At the uh last week's planning commission meeting, uh, Mr. Rogers with R C I, the expansion of Kennington. Then, yeah, I didn't know this, but he's not gonna develop the property on three sixty, it's gonna remain commercial. And he's going hot and heavy on the medical field to bring that into the county. Imaging car practice, drugstore physicians. Which is a good idea, because they, he is expanding the age-affected community by thirty-one homes in Canada.
Why is this?
Kennington?
Oh, okay.
Recal three six.
So he's abandoning?
No, he's not gonna develop the commercial property on three sixty front, he's, and then uh, the question was asked, what is, he, he, he says, I'm leaving the commercial, and they pursue it. That's what he said, pursuing, he'd be medical, bringing car practice physicians.
Why? And where is the front? That's why I'm, it can't, all in Kennington?
Right in front, the three sixty.
Okay, all right, okay. So you can bring in the medical instead of pursuing.
No, the homes are coming on the backside. I I guess it's a property way, the library was gonna be his part, I would write, no, that's all back in the. It's between the nickel property and Kennington drive.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Right across from American League.
Right, okay.
I'm the. That would it, but yeah, I mean, he got some good plans. So. So, I mean, stay in touch with that following.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, citizens comment, uh, closing new business, citizens comment period. Nobody in the house tonight?
Jerry.
Gotcha. Um, next meeting will be July second, twenty twenty-three will be a work session. So next, we're gonna go into a close meeting with anyone. So we have a motion to go into close.
When is July the? July twelfth?
July twelfth, is that what I said?
Yeah, I know, that's.
I'm sorry. You know, July twelfth, twenty twenty-three. The motion to go in the.
We're going to most go in love section under uh according to section two point two three seven one one eight three. COVID of Virginia requiring real price to use public services, such case pertaining to uh firing of real profit for public use.
Second.
Mr. Holder, aye. Mr. Campbell? Ms. Williams? Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Harwood?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson? So you need a motion to.
Be a motion to reconvene. Open session, be second? Excellent.
Ms. Campbell? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yep.
Mr. Harwood? Mr. Pearson? Mr. Holder?
Aye.
You need a motion to um adopt F R one, saying that you only discuss things in closed session, that you want in closed session and this stuff.
Is that on the back here?
Yeah.
What is it?
The certification, certifying the closing.
It must not be a motion.
You know what, I think it's on the agenda, though.
You don't have to read the whole thing.
You don't have to read the whole thing.
Yeah, yeah, he already made a motion, he just needed a second.
A second.
Um, Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Harwood? Mr. Pearson? Mr. Holder?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
That seemed very complicated for some reason. Wouldn't change is really good at this, you know?
He's very good at it, very, very good.
He does it every day. All right, um, that concludes this evening's meeting. Do a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Yep.
Jack, you? All right.